Now, I've worked in transportation construction for years. I understand safety, especially roadways, gotta be able to see, don't want to block things. I understand and appreciate property owners not wanting things parked in front of their places if that's their wish. What my suggestion has been is that for a business like ours or anyone else downtown, what we would like at least is the ability to apply for a parking permit or create a loading zone if it should be deemed safe in front of our storefront where we could park a food truck or any other vendor that may wish to park there during our business hours. So that's, that was always been my suggestion. And to provide further comment, as we've been working on our facility, we're about three weeks from opening. Many nights we spent down there working on concrete, putting up, painting, everything else that we've been doing. It's been difficult to find something to eat at night in downtown Staton. I mean, we have our, we have our options there we have, but there aren't that many once you've been down there for quite a while. And also, a lot of our brick and mortar buildings along 3rd Avenue and other streets as I drive down are sitting empty. So I'd be curious to see what do we do to step that game up, I guess, is are we really, are we trying to get something going down here or we want to keep it the way it is? And that's just, just the question I've had while we've been down there working on it. So that's all I have to say.
I've got one. When does the sud start to flow?
Three weeks. Three weeks pending our final inspection with Department of Agriculture.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. And there's one more. Carmen Nguyen. I'm probably not pronouncing that correctly, but...
You did fabulously.
I hope I'm close. Go ahead, Carmen.
My name's Carmen. I live at 8684 Jackson Hill Road in Salem. Not really part of y'all's community, but I do come down here for the First and Water. As far as, as what I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of opposition based on the fear that we're gonna take away business from any of the brick and mortars here. But what a lot of people don't realize is, one, it's not gonna saturate anything. Two, when people are waiting for their food, they're looking around. Any of y'all who've come to First and Water know, especially from our track, you gotta sack before you're gonna get your food. We chit chat with you if we're not busy. We encourage people look around to try other places. You know, they're like, "Do you have burgers?" No. But when we work on Fairview Industrial, we tell them you can go down to Cossey's and get a sandwich. We just don't serve that. But we tell them other places to go 'cause our goal is for people to never pack a lunch. We want them to go out. Most of the food trucks don't even wanna stay food trucks for the long haul. They wanna become the brick and mortars that are the competition on the corner rather than on the road.
I should talk.
There's been a few downsides, you know, but it's, I think a broader scope than, than you're blocking our business or, or something like that. You know, we're here to stimulate everybody's economy. We buy our city permit for Staton. We have one for Salem. If we wanna work in Silverton, we have to buy one for there too. We help to pay for what we utilize in your community as well as trying to give back just something a little bit extra so people are bored. Boredom is the death of going out. You know, if they go out for a food truck and then they're like, "You know, that was fun. Let's go to that restaurant that they were parked next to because it looked good, but we had already ordered our food." You know, so it's not, it's not the death sentence everybody thinks of. And as far as the parking spaces go, in Salem, no, you cannot park on the right of way. However, the business owners have to purchase those parking spaces. So I think there's a little bit of difference there. They're not public parking spaces. The business owners pay for the parking spaces, a minimum of parking spaces within the front of their building. So, and I'm sure all cities have different ordinances on how the parking goes. No, a lot of them don't let you park on the right of way because there's not ample parking. The 72-hour thing, none of us are gonna stay anywhere for 72 hours. Usually our lunches are like 10:30 to 2:00. In the evening times, it's maybe 6:00 to 10:00 depending on where we're parking. We have lives. We're not gonna leave our trucks there and, and go someplace because people break into them, they vandalize them. You know, we have ours parked at night inside a shop because there's problems in Salem with vandalizing. You know, so it's not, it's not like we're just gonna abandon them in front of anything. You know, it can be a benefit if everybody works together, everybody supports everybody else, trucks sending people to businesses, businesses saying, you know, "This is here, enjoy it. I'm always here." They're not. You know, it's just about working together and being a community.
I'm, I'm sure the audience appreciates your comments, ma'am. It would've, had I been thinking a little clearer, I would've asked you to address the council.
My bad.
Rather than the, rather than the, but the audience, I'm sure enjoyed it.
Well, I'm ridiculously bad at public speaking, so I'm sorry.
Well, I needed to do it sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? If not, done with public testimony. Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, can I call Matt back up here for a second to the podium?
Sure. If he will, yes.
He will. Matt, what's the proximity to your place right now? There's two empty lots that I can think of. There's three within probably five feet of your door.
There is, there, not five feet.
Well, the one, okay, the one directly across the street, I'm thinking Catty Corner, but what about the other two that are down, just a couple of feet down?
There, there is, and even the, the Water District owned, our building over there, they own around the corner of Fleming Autobody, the alleyway there. There's even, there's space there that, we've talked, we've talked to them about possibly doing something with that with regard to food trucks.
Sure, that's what I'm thinking.
But that, in the immediate, it's kind of a, something that's down the road. There's some, they have their old substation that's sitting there. There's some fencing that would have to be redone, things like that. So it'd be something that would be, if we, if we went that direction, which we may very well, it'd be something that would be phased in later.
Okay. I just don't understand the need to have this on, on public property right of way when you have those two options to your right. We haven't even talked about it.
Well, and it's not, it's not necessarily a need, again, for, for us. Part of our plan with food, including the food trucks, is also folks being able to order food delivered there. They got a sandwich, they can bring it.
Okay.
You know, that type of thing. More or less it was what we could see as a, as a convenience factor.
Gotcha.
If we're able to, if we're able to buy a parking permit or something, or establish a loading zone in front of our two roll-up doors where we could have that truck parked.
Gotcha.
Then we see that also as a safety thing where, you know, down on Water Street at night, it can get kinda dark and shadowy. So if, if we're able to create a shorter distance that's a little safer for the folks to go to, we would like to do.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. Any other questions?
Anything?
Not thinking.
Here we go. Come on. Nobody wants to jump?
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't have a question for him. I just have a question.
All right. Okay, thank you, Matt. Other questions from the council, please? Anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I'm wondering if some of the things that I'm gonna ask, if there might be better addressed under like a broader road use ordinance or downtown ordinance. So this question's kinda for Dan. So I, I see a lot of positives here. I see that, you know, food carts, they're gonna attract business, more potential customers coming to downtown, promotes nightlife in, in Staton. We have an entire nonprofit organization working on revitalizing downtown Staton, which means that we're gonna be bringing in more people, which means there's going to be parking issues. There will always be parking issues. That's what makes a downtown, a downtown is, is people being there. So if, you know, if a city doesn't have parking issues, that they don't have a vibrant downtown. My concerns are, I'll, I'll address one of these later, but my, my concerns are about the noise of the generators. So I, I don't know if, if it's possible to put either in this ordinance or if it's better in the noise ordinance or street use ordinance that generators can or can't be used or they can only be used for a certain amount of time. I am concerned about the noise of a generator in front of businesses. I'm also concerned about it, them blocking businesses. So I guess my first question is, is that where, if I'm, if I'm talking about the noise, which I am, how can we address the noise issue in, in the best way? Is it in this ordinance? Is it to add something to another ordinance, Dan?
I'd taken some notes during the public testimony. One of the things I wrote down as options was to prohibit the use of gasoline or propane generators by food trucks when parked on the street.
Okay.
I think, I think that would be the, shall we say, cleanest way to address that issue, yet still allow them when they're parked on private property.
Yeah. Thank you. Follow-up question?
Go ahead, please.
Um, so I'm also concerned about the blocking of the businesses in two, in two ways. So I'm not sure if, if, again, that goes for street use ordinances or putting in this actual ordinance about food trucks. But, I mean, we don't wanna take away from food establishment businesses that are already there. So I'm, I don't know if it's a good idea to, to put in like that they can't operate within, I don't know, 50, 75, 100 feet of a, of a food establishment, but also that they can't operate within like 25 feet, 40 feet. I don't know what the right number is. I'm just throwing out numbers at this point, but of, of an actual door of an establishment so that they're not like right in that front parking spot in front of a business. Is that possible for us to have like a map drawn up of what that might look like? I know that's really gonna narrow down where people can park, and I think that that's a, a good thing, but is it possible for us to see that? If anyone else is even interested in seeing that? I just...
If, if the council is interested in seeing that it is possible for us to come up with that, you may recall that back in May when you, when the council asked for some more information on the impacts, one of the options that we had looked at, and, and that map is included in your packet, I did not bring it to put up on the screen, was looking at the idea of allowing food trucks on 3rd Ave provided they were not parked directly in front of a building. And there were a limited, again, you've got that drawing in your packet that showed those limited locations. I think that, you know, if we came up with the parameter of X feet from a doorway, we could probably approximate where those locations would be. You didn't, you kind of alluded to the question, but you didn't directly ask the question about getting permission or, or being located only in front of businesses that it's okay to be located in.
Thank you, yes.
We, when we were discussing this at the very beginning back in March or April before it came to council, the first time we began to discuss that, I would be very hesitant to recommend to council to include that type of provision. We're talking about, the street is a public resource. It is open to anybody to park there. You know, in a residential setting, we are not restricted to parking on the street in front of our house. It is the public street. We have the right to park in front of our next-door neighbor's house without getting their permission to do so. I would be very concerned with providing a criterion for the city permission of getting the permission from somebody else. We need, I believe we need to have objective criteria that we can apply and determine whether they're met or not without having to, to be in the process of so and, you know, well, they like Joe, but they don't like Jim, so Joe gets to locate in front of them even though Jim's gonna have the same impact. So I, I would strongly recommend that we develop criteria that we are comfortable with that will as narrowly as we can tailor the locations to where we think we want to allow them without getting into go get permission from the business owner in front of where you wanna park.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry.
I guess...
I got a lot of notes. Dan, um, can we, with that in mind of what you were saying, because I, I like that you brought that up of, you know, we don't, these are public streets, so I appreciate you bringing that up 'cause that does change some of my other notes that I had here. So thank you. But what I am wondering is, is it appropriate to put in here a, a time limit of, you know, operating hours of when the noise ordinance is in place or the parks are open or something where they're not able to go 24 hours and also that they can't return to that same block on either side for a certain amount of time, whether it be 48 hours or 72 hours, that, that one individual business? So they're kinda having to rotate through the city and taking turns of where they're, where they're going. I, I don't know if that's feasible. I, I can just see someone going, "Wow, this is a really good spot," and then always parking there every day. And then that, that's gonna, you know, bother or not bother, but I don't know. It, it could get maybe, become negative for some of the businesses.
Um, one of, one of my other notes that I wrote down during the public testimony was to include time restrictions. Not so, I wasn't thinking as much as of how frequently someone could park in a spot, but with the idea of limiting the impacts on the existing businesses and residents in, in some of these neighborhoods of saying not before 3 o'clock PM or 4:00 and not after, pick a time, 11, 12, 1, 2 in the morning or whatever. So that they're, they, as much as I'd be surprised if anybody wants to operate outside of those hours anyway, life is full of surprises. So to, you know, that would limit the impact on the existing businesses. There are very few businesses in this area that are open after 6:00 PM with the exception of the bars.
What, what barriers do you see in, do, following kind of a model that Salem has for like their downtown with the like three-hour parking, but not putting it like for, for everyone, but in this ordinance? They have like signs up that say, you know, only three hours once per day per block. And so putting that into this ordinance for these food trucks, is there, do you see a barrier where we, where we couldn't do that, where that might not work? Because that would then keep someone from coming back multiple times a day or camping out all day or, you know?
I think that could be a possibility. We'd need to, to figure out how, how to win it, but...
Finding a balance in this.
Yep.
Because, I mean, you don't wanna take from businesses and you also don't wanna stop businesses from being able to, to come in and, and create more business for your already there brick and mortar businesses. I mean, thank you for entertaining my questions.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from the council or shall we go to a staff summary, please?
Hearing no, hearing no more questions from the council.
Let's do a staff summary. Thank you, Dan.
So as I said earlier, this is an issue, this is the third time this has appeared before the council. The recommenda, the, the proposal was developed by staff, the planning department and the police department working together in an effort for the city to be responsive to a request from a business downtown. That we tried to tailor narrowly by the restrictions that we put on. Perhaps it could be more narrowly tailored to be a bit more restrictive, but still responsive to the business that requested that we consider the change. That being said, as I, as I said in, in response to Councilor Page's requests, questions, I've got notes on, on, that I pretty much have, have all said on, on three different options in, in addition to what's before you that the counselor, the council could consider. One is to more narrowly tailor the regulations to limit the impacts, perhaps even tying it to the downtown commercial mixed-use zone, which would be the lower end of 2nd Ave, the block of East Florence between 2nd and 3rd and the block of West Water Street between 2nd and 3rd. So as to not to impact the remainder of the downtown mixed-use zones. A third, a second option to consider would be to include time restrictions, as I talked about, saying not before, setup may not occur before a certain time and may not extend beyond another time. And that's what I was thinking of when I wrote that note. The other would be, as Counselor Hook was suggesting, a, you can only be in one spot for three hours or four hours and then you've gotta move to another location. And the third is to address the, the potential noise issue of generators by prohibiting gasoline or propane generators while operating. So the, the options you've got before you, as in the staff report, are to approve the first consideration as presented, to approve it with modifications, or to retain the code unchanged.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Let me close the hearing. And council deliberation.
Mr. Mayor?
What folks like to do with this? Yes?
So I just wanna say, I'm torn. I think that we wanna be supportive of the food trucks. We wanna be supportive of the new businesses. I have no doubt, zero doubt, that Mr. Carey is a man of integrity and has nothing but the best of intentions, but I can't say the same for other food trucks that might come in from out of town. And as such, the ordinance should be written in a way that prevents abuses and, and continues to promote downtown business. While we didn't move forward with the economic plan, I did like the guiding principle of existing business first. And at the end of the day, there's a lot of nuance that would need to be added to make it a little bit tighter, but the ordinance as it's written is not there.
Okay. Other council deliberations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I feel like this is a really great ordinance to come forward right now for Staton because we are trying to revitalize our downtown. I agree with Counselor Mullen when he says that, you know, it's not quite, you know, written how it probably should be at this point because we should be putting our current businesses first. But with that said, we are allowing food trucks to operate within our city, so they are also current businesses. So helping find that, strike that right balance between not taking away from current businesses downtown by, by really narrowing this down and then maybe even providing these food trucks with a map of these are places that you, you can park. So it's still easy for them to find places to park, but, but not detracting too much from, from the other businesses. So anyway, I just feel like if we go, go forward and really narrow this down, maybe bring it back again, I don't know. I know that right now I can't, can't like say, "Yes, it's perfect the way that it is." I think that all of the streets in downtown should be open for this with a lot more restriction put on when they can operate and, and where they can operate and with what kind of, of fuel. Because, I mean, when we think about it, we're also trying to, we don't, we don't wanna have a whole bunch of pollution in our, in our downtown either. And if we're gonna be using gasoline or propane or any of these things, they, they may start to pollute our downtown if we have too many people there operating these food trucks 'cause Staton's gonna keep growing, so.
Wow. I'm gonna stick my two cents in on this. I kinda liked Mr. Abboud's thought that maybe just leave it alone for a year and come back and see what it looks like in a year, maybe two years. See what's happened. Watch it grow or die on the vine, but just leave the code alone at this point. That's just my thought.
Mr. Mayor? The last time this was brought up to us, there were two counselors that had some safety concerns, and I feel like with those, someone in the audience, I agree with Counselor Mullen and your sentiments, everything that you said was something that I certainly agree with. I enjoy food trucks and I love to see them around town and, and partake in them certainly. But one comment was made that businesses operating on public streets was a concern, and we did kind of shoot down another business who wanted to operate business on a public property as well. And so to say that one business or type of business can, but another business, we're not going to allow it, you know, that, that doesn't seem very fair either. I would, I would like to see something, so we were talking about the safety issues, so having more of like a food pod, food truck pod or something like that in the downtown area would maybe be a better fit for our community, and so I would, I would go with maybe keeping our code unchanged.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I, I wanted to say that we also haven't made a decision on that ordinance yet on whether they could or could not, if that, we have, that's an ordinance coming up at the next council meeting, and so we haven't actually made a decision on whether that business could or could not operate on the public property, right? Keith, we haven't made a decision on that. It was just brought up as an option, so I don't, I don't know that that fully applies.
Your question to Keith has been redirected to me, if I may.
Perfect.
Um, the, you, you are correct that the council has not taken action on the ordinance changes that were recommended by the ordinance, what was it, 1019 Review Committee, but the issue of making a publicly owned space available is a separate issue than the changes to the code that were recommended by that committee.
Which hasn't been brought before council.
Right. No, there was a, there was a request made a meeting or two ago about purchasing some land from the city, but yes, the council has not acted on either of those requests as such.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Are you folks ready to go to a decision on this, please?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to go ahead and say, I'm really happy to see everybody here who's came and contributed and given us some feedback. I've heard a lot of things today that we have not heard in our first two considerations at this, and I think that's kinda what the three of us really wanted to hear is, from the community, is this a right step? And what I'm hearing is perhaps not now, but maybe later on down the road. I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one more thing to say on this. I feel like just not doing anything, we may be missing out on a really great opportunity to change policy and, and make it the right kind of policy that fits Staton and that can really help stimulate more business downtown. I don't know that pausing this for a year is a good idea. We were elected to do a hard job, and this is a really hard issue, and I think that we have the, the brains and the community here giving us their opinions, that if we continue to work through this together, that we can come to some type of a compromise or a plan that, that works the best for Staton and that, you know...
that works the best for Stateon, and that, you know, it doesn't impede on anyone's right to operate a business.
Have we all, have we all been heard? All painted ourselves into corners and so on and so forth? Let's go to a council decision on this, please. Need to offer a motion. One of the three or four or five or six things that are possible here.
Actually don't, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
We actually don't have to do anything, I don't believe. If our option is to retain the code unchanged, there isn't a motion necessary.
Okay.
That's what I'm hearing, but I could be wrong.
Well, let me just ask casually, who else wants to leave the thing alone for a while?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see some additional restrictions in this ordinance to make sure some of the nightmare scenarios don't happen that we've already discussed here tonight.
Okay.
I'd also like to see that. I'd like to see it come back. I think that Dan has a really good idea based-- I mean, he was taking notes, he was really listening, and I think that we could even welcome the community to, you know, help us collaborate on this more and bring it back in a month or two.
My only stipulation for that would be to, Councilor Hook, you were saying, find other communities that are also allowing these businesses to operate on city property, because there's lots of other cities that don't allow that, and it's probably for a good reason. And so, if we're considering that we're gonna start growing, not start, but we're continue, we're gonna continue to grow, then that could be an issue down the road. If we are thinking in terms of down the road, having businesses that are-- there's a restaurant going in right now, we don't know the operating hours of that, it's a brick and mortar, and so we could see our downtown have businesses that are open later. You don't wanna kinda shoot yourself in the foot in that respect, so I would, if that is the case, I'd like to see some examples of other businesses, of other communities that are doing that as well.
Let's focus, let's stay focused on those.
That was, that was in, that was pertaining to food trucks.
I know, I know.
In other cities, yes.
I know, we can.
Thank you.
I'm not the only one that can stray a field on this, though.
You're fine.
Let's, let's give the community some, some decision here tonight. And, you know, to, to leave the code alone for, I don't know, 60 days, 90 days, six months, a year, it doesn't have to be any specific time. If we can find ways to modify it and deal realistically with these things, and safely and considerably and so on and so forth, we can do that. But for tonight, we need to, we need to offer some, some answer to the folks that are here and the community.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I know that it's not one of the options, but I'm hoping that it can be an option. I'd like to move that we bring this back after, again, to the council in September, after Dan has had a chance to incorporate some of the comments that have been brought forward from both council and the public, and then reconsider it again once it's been amended.
Okay. We'd like to offer that in a motion, please. And go ahead and put your September date in and whatever. Being the soul of consideration, I'll probably allow.
The second.
However you want to do this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I move that we bring this ordinance back on the September 16th City Council meeting at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, after we have had our planning department director, Dan, incorporate some new amendments to this ordinance.
Seconded.
All right. A motion in the second to bring this ordinance back, this is 1031, bring it back on September 15th for further discussion, actions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There we go. Any other, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
It doesn't change the fact that you're having commerce on public property once again, and so I see no reason to do this. We're not preventing these folks from having a food cart downtown. We're simply saying you can't operate on a public domain. That's all we're doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Other ideas, other thoughts, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Part of that is that Dan was also going to look into what other cities have done and the outcomes from those cities' decisions, because we're not gonna be, we're not the first city that's done this. So, I would love to see what other cities have done and how, whether there has been any issue with operating that way on the street.
Okay. Okay, the motion, the motion in the second is to, is to bring it back on September 15th.
I would be interested to see that, but that's really my own caveat, because I, again, agree that doing commerce on, on our public streets is a concern of mine, along with some safety issues as well.
Okay. You ready? Shall we see how this goes? Alyssa, would you poll the council, please, on this question?
Sure. Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes.
Councilor Quigley?
No.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Councilor Mullen?
Ah, yes, I'm open to seeing it again.
Motion passes four to one.
Four to one, okay. All right. So, we'll do this again in Sep-- well, not all of it in September, but some of it. All right, thank you. And I would also like to thank all of you that made the effort to come out and spend the evening with us, listening to thrash around in these questions. General business, implementate-- whoa, what? I hear, I hear noise. There we go. Okay, general business, implementation of new nonrepresented salary schedule. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you is, tonight is the implementation of the nonrepresented salary schedule, which was completed by McGrath Human Resources. Just a brief summary, this, this was something that's been brought before the council before in another component, which was the 2019-2020 budget. We talked about the implementation of the McGrath salary schedule. It was adopted as part of the budgeting process. Last meeting, we adopted the, there's three units we have in our, in our, in our city. We have two bargaining units, State and Police Officers Association, Ask Me, and then the nonrepresented. So, before you is the component of the nonrepresented. In the last meeting, we adopted the Ask Me component of this, attached is the salary schedule. There is one recommended change, that Public Works Director position, when an employee is registered as a civil engineer, be moved to the grade 160, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And after everyone's looked at that, we need a, an enabling motion to improve, approve the implementation of a new nonrepresented salary schedule as presented or as amended, so however you folks want to deal with this.
Mr. Mayor, we have a component for citizen comment, just to remind you.
I'm sorry. Do that again, please.
Citizen comment, Mr. Mayor?
I guess.
There is.
There is. Yeah, for each item.
I'm missing something here. What do you got?
Citizen comment.
Oh, citizen comment. Oh, the citizens want to comment on this stuff? Okay. Oh, there it is, right on my agenda. Look at that. Does anyone want to comment on this? Yes, Mr. Abboud.
I'm sorry, is this the time for public comment on anything?
No, not yet.
Thank you.
No, there's, there's, that's done.
I'll get to that, though. No, you won't.
Mr. Mayor, with the, with the new--
Come on, take us, take us down the road.
Yeah, with the new council rules, Mr. Mayor, there isn't a second component for public comment. There's a comment at the beginning of the period, and there's a comment for any action item, and that's, that's it. That's the new council rules, Mr. Mayor.
How about if I want to allow it?
Business from the mayor. Business from the mayor, I think you probably could.
That's not a, I might do that. On that nonrepresented salary schedule, any, any citizen comment there? No? Council deliberation, then? And council action. I don't want to be pushy about these things, but if we could move along.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion to approve the implementation of the new nonrepresented salary schedule as presented.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion in the second to approve the implementation of a new nonrepresented salary schedule as presented. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to make sure that, that salary is based on performance reviews, or is it automatic?
No, it's, it is based off of performance reviews and merit increases.
Okay.
Can I just make a clarifying question?
Other thoughts and comments here, please?
Yes, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can I make a clarifying question? So, the mod, so, option one is with the modification, Keith?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Alyssa, poll the council on this one, please.
Sure. Councilor Quigley?
Yes.
Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Councilor Mullen?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, good, thank you. Now, communications from mayor and councilors. I have yet to get to a meeting of the fire board, and I really want to do that, and for some reason, our schedule's conflict, so I have not got to that. In August, I'm gonna take the city judge to the monthly school board meeting, and that could be interesting. We're gonna talk about things of mutual concern. I'm gonna recognize Mr. Abboud, if he has a comment. Under privileges of the chair.
Jury Abboud, 836 East Cathy. Regarding the food trucks, I noticed you closed the hearing. Dan's gonna come up with a new staff report, I assume, to cover all these things. Will you reopen the public hearing at the meeting in September, or is there an opportunity for people to comment on Dan's new staff report?
Oh, boy. Give us some help here.
The, shall we call it, new-fangled State and City Council agenda now provides for public comment on each agenda item without the necessity of a formal public hearing.
Excuse me, but then they don't have to listen to me.
Oh, well, they, no. Even at a public hearing, they do not need to listen to you, but you have the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, councilors, anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I was hoping that there could be some council support to change our agenda instead of saying citizen comment, to either saying resident comment or public comment. Just being sensitive to the word citizen in the political climate that we're in, it would be nice to have it just say public comment, as a lot of agendas stand sub-citizen.
Okay. I'll chew on that one a little bit, I guess. We have people weigh in on our, on public comments, assuming that, especially property owners, they, they don't have to live here. Their, their testimony or their comments are taken with the same weight as, as those of us that have chosen to live here. And I start to see a kind of, I, I separate that, and you saw it tonight. Welcome to, I'd like to see Randy Cranston come here and visit, but do we give him the same weight as, as someone else who lives here? He's a property owner. Okay, fine. And he's a citizen, but he's not a resident. And Stateon, for those of us that live here, I know that's narrow.
Mr. Mayor, that's my, that's kinda my point of why, can we change it just to public comment? Because we're not checking anyone's ID to see if they live in Stateon when they come here.
We could, sure.
But why, but why do that?
I don't know.
I can check with the city attorney to see if it's a Scrivener's type thing, we can just make a change, or if we need to bring it back forward to the council to formally change.
That's a good point. It's a good point, well point, point I'll take. Communications from city staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just wanted to inform the council that I will be not, will be not present at the next meeting.
Whoa.
He's at it.
Am I the only one that can't skip meetings? What is this? I'm the only one that doesn't work? Okay. Anything else? Adjourn, future agenda items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Annexation ordinance 1019?
Mr. Mayor.
Personnel manual? You got some more?
Yes.
Oh, don't just jump in, wait until we're on to something else. Go ahead, come on, you're fine.
Mr. Loftus was talking about a resolution for a letter of support for his, for grants, for his community museum, and I just wanted to see if the council was interested in pursuing that for--
Is that something that we've done?
I don't know how that works, but--
For people before?
I just wanted to acknowledge that, that was something that he'd asked for.
Mr. Loftus had reached out to me prior, and I had advised him to send me his information and what he was looking for, so we knew what components he was wanting us to participate in. I can reach out to him again to see if he'd be willing to do that, you know, before we commit to a resolution--
Certainly.
--just to see what the components of it were. I will reach out to him again and see. He contacted me last week to ask about something, and that's what my suggestion was, was to send us what he would like, or what the components of the resolution, or what support he needed exactly from the city. So, I'll reach out to him again to check with him and get back with the council.
Thank you.
Are we done? Thank you, good evening. Let's go home.
No, no. Mr. Mayor.
Well, can't get in these things.
Well, I didn't know the gavel was gonna bang.
Come on, city staff. Communications from city staff. I had it, I asked it already. Come on. Let's go.
We have a new finance director, Susanna. I told her today, I was gonna put her on the spot, I was gonna give her about six hours to come up with her elevator speech, so we're gonna put her on the spot and let her do her elevator speech, introduce herself. Susanna.
Double mics and everything. Hello, my name is Susanna Spraja. I am the new finance director here. I've been here about two weeks. I'm very pleased to be a part of the city staff's team, to bring my talent and experiences to help. I come with 15-plus years of business management experience, from running a, being the finance director of a school district and nonprofits, as well as done consulting work to help for cash businesses and for nonprofits help, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
Welcome. We're very happy to have you.
Okay, thank, thank you and welcome. Keith?
I'm all done.
You're done? Has anyone else got anything? This is an open generous invitation. Let's go home. Thank you.